I guess everybody's ready. All right, turn your microphones on. Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Trusty Spurling.
Here.
Trusty Lee.
Here.
Trusty Heinz.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yay.
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Bun.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
All right, that carries 6-0. Move on, items for separate action. We have item A, recommendation from Plan Commission for PC 2015-007Z regarding self-service storage warehouse uses in the B3 general automotive and wholesale business district. This is a text amendment to Section 9 of the zoning ordinance, and I'll ask Director Young for a summary of this item.
Thank you. Tonight, you have four different items related to the proposal for the U-Haul operation in the old Kmart building. The first would be looking at the Plan Commission's recommendation on self-storage warehouse units within the B3 zoning district currently, as a special use. Currently, the use is only allowed in an M1 or M2 district. Staff felt, and the commission concurred, that it would be appropriate to include the B3 general automotive district and warehouse business district as a special use for this type of operation. So, the recommendation from the Plan Commission was to approve the text amendment.
Thanks, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
First four items, all it is is discussion, correct? Or do we vote on the first reading? No?
We vote on the recommendation, but the text amendment is second.
I'll move to accept the Plan Commission's recommendation.
Second. Roll call.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
Trusty Heinz.
Yay.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yay.
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Bun.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
All right, that carries 6-0. Move right into the ordinance, which is 1688, which is the text amendment that we just talked about. This is the first reading, so we...
There's nothing other than if you want to talk about, but it's the same item.
Okay. So, unless anybody has anything else to add, this will be on for action at our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is the special use is tied to the occupant and not to the property?
No, it is not. The special use is tied to the property.
To the property, then?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, if you have any comments, you can bring them up now, or we'll see this at our next meeting. Move on to item C, recommendation of Plan Commission on PC 2015-008Z SU rezoning from B2 in the general retail business district to B3 general automotive and wholesale business district, and special uses for a self-service storage warehouse and outdoor storage at 1900 Douglas Road, U-Haul Company of Chicago Western Suburbs. And I'll turn it back over to Director Young.
This also was before the Plan Commission at their last meeting. Staff recommended approval of the special use for this particular location. I'll just remind the board that the intent was for the old Kmart building only for this special use. It is not the entire center. The balance of the center will remain as a B2, which is the appropriate... We felt that it's the appropriate zoning district for the balance of the center. With the Plan Commission's recommendation of approval, they asked that U-Haul take a look at some articulation of some of the details within the entire center in terms of possibly some brickwork or stone. In your packet, there is a new exhibit that was presented by U-Haul for that use. It's a little bit tough to read because it's in black and white, but you will note, it's a three-page document, and you will note that they've added some brickwork throughout the entire center, and then they've done some accents to the old Kmart building on page two, their specific entrance, and then the locations along the far southeast portion of the building, as well as the south portion of the building on page three. You'll see some detail that... It shows a before and an after. So, the top is existing condition, and the bottom is the proposed articulation that would be added to the structure's facade.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments. U-Haul will own this entire shopping center, correct? That's what they intend to do?
Correct.
I was at the Plan Commission meeting, and what... Partly what makes this attractive to me is the fact that U-Haul is purchasing the entire shopping center, and they... I was under the impression that they were going to do facade improvements to the entire... Entire building.
Which they have proposed in this latest set of three drawings. If you look at the top, it's the existing condition, and the bottom adds brick columns, if you will, at three locations within the center itself.
So, they've added brick in three locations throughout the whole?
Separate from the old Kmart building, yes, sir.
And that's the facade improvements?
Yes.
That's it?
It appears like they're going to paint as well, correct?
There's representatives here tonight from U-Haul if you want to ask them specific questions.
If you guys want to come down to the podium?
I attend the same meeting. I don't think anybody said there was a timetable law, was there, Rich? I mean, all they said was they're going to fix the U-Haul part of it, and the timetable on the blacktop and the trees was down the road. They didn't really say how far down the road, but they didn't get very specific that they were going to do it right away, especially with winter coming here.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
But down the road could be five years from now.
Well, I think Angela could maybe answer some of your questions.
Yeah, we're looking to do the improvements as soon as we're able to. With winter coming on, it probably won't be this winter, but we're definitely looking at improving the lot. We're looking at the landscaping situation because there are a lot of diseased and dead trees there. There is painting that will happen throughout the entire facility on the outside of the building, and the brickwork that Rich mentioned as well.
Awesome.
There's no plan, based on these literations that I'm looking at, for any other than paint on the Kmart portion of the entranceway? I was envisioning those brick columns that are coming down the line.
You're talking like the same brick that we're doing, like, say, by the Planet Fitness is what you'd like to see at the entrance of?
At least on the columns.
On the actual...
Yeah, the actual vertical column.
Yeah, I can shoot.
It would kind of tie the whole center together.
And if I might, there is some additional brickwork, like the brickwork in the balance of the center, that they've shown on the two corners, the south corners, the southeast corner and the southwest corner, with some arches. They've added some brickwork there as well. So, it's not just paint on the Kmart portion.
Okay, and you know what?
That's on the third sheet.
In the photos, I didn't catch that those were...
Yeah, it's tough to tell.
It looks like it's paint, so that would be great, because I think that would now tie it around the corner, and then continue it all the way down the whole front of the facade.
And that's what everyone had requested. That's what we tried to accomplish with that.
Yeah, so I think those columns that are right in front of those doorways would be, instead of just being painted steel girders, would really accentuate the... Make the whole complex look...
The one question I had is, I sent this into Jared, I think, on Friday or today. All of the trees, the small trees, they must be in the IDOT right-of-way that were recently planted along...
Yes, those were part of the IDOT expansion or improvements to Route 30.
So, those will remain, they were just... They needed to be taken off the photo to do the rendering?
Absolutely.
Okay. Perfect.
They'll remain, yes.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate your willingness to kind of give it a little bit of a facelift.
Absolutely.
I think the reality is to get people to lease out. Part of that, you probably need to do some of that, so we're excited to see the facelift there, for sure.
Absolutely.
Any other questions of Angela while she's at the podium?
If I could, this is also first reading, so you would be asked to take a vote on this at your next meeting in two weeks.
This one is the recommendation, and then the ordinance?
I'm sorry, I jumped to that.
You're talking about the ordinance?
It's okay.
Yeah, we got you. All right, I'll move to accept the Plan Commission's recommendation.
All right. Is there a second? Any more discussion on the recommendation?
Now, is this with modifications, or we're accepting this as it sits?
This is just the Plan Commission recommendation.
Okay. Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
Trusty Heinz.
Yay.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yay.
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Bun.
Yes.
That being said, now, if you want something different from tonight to second reading, now's the time to let us know.
I would like... I mean, I would like to see that brickwork on some of those vertical columns, just because of the aesthetics, to make it not look quite so industrial. But I'm just one of seven people.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah. I go back and forth. I don't want to get into architectural. I think I appreciate your willingness to upgrade the facade in the center, but I'm not an architect to judge. I mean, those columns are not 10 by 10. They're one-foot columns, so to brick those out, what's that going to look like? What's that going to do to the elevation? Because I actually think the U-Haul elevation there looks fine. You know, right at the old entrance location or whatnot, but... It sounds like there's two that would like to see additional architectural work. Is there any?
I think they're going to fix the whole center up eventually, but I'm not... I really don't care for holding up a special use now, just on a couple of bricks. In other words, as long as you understand that we all would like it improved, and welcome to Montgomery, just fill the space. That's the name of the game.
All right.
I'd like to add, too, I'm getting comments from residents who are excited about this facility coming to Montgomery, so...
Good to hear that.
We wish you very well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right, this is ordinance 1689. To introduce it, this is first reading, so if you have any comments between now and two weeks from now, we'll look to approve this. We'll put this on for item for separate action in two weeks, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item E, Resolution 2015-011. This is accepting the conveyance of real property from the county of Kane. I was going to... Who wants this one?
Steve?
Not really.
Okay.
All... Everybody's looking away.
Well, I would have thought it would have been Steve or Rich.
It may be Rich.
Yeah. He's chatting, so...
We did the work on it, but the motivation for why we...
Yeah. Do you want to skip this?
I don't have the history.
You want to skip this one, go to...
Rich is coming back now. Sorry.
It's all right.
The item on the part...
Item E.
Accepting the parcels.
Hopefully, you know a lot more about it.
I don't know this, I'm sorry. Excellent.
Why don't we not take action on this one?
Yep.
And we'll get your answers as to why we're asking.
I did not add this to the agenda, so I'm sorry. I don't know what this is.
Don't worry about it. Is there anybody opposed to tabling this at this time? We don't need to take a vote on that.
No, we'll just put it on another agenda.
All right, this will be on a future meeting. Moving on, item F, agreement between the Village of Montgomery and International Union of Operating Engineers Local 150. This is our public employees division. With that, I will...
I can handle this one.
There you go. Turn it over to Directors O'Fallon.
All right. I'd like to begin just by thanking the board for the conversations we had during this and the direction you gave, which helped us come to completion. I'd like to thank Todd and Justin, along with Megan and Lisa Callaway, for the meetings. I will tell you, the union voted on this last Thursday, and they voted unanimously to approve this contract, and so because of that, we are bringing it to you to seek your approval. It's a three-year contract, just like our others, and we've discussed the terms of it with you previously, so I would answer any new questions you have. Otherwise, I would ask for your approval.
Any questions or comments from the board on this one?
Are we going to give the office personnel a raise, too? Some kind of raise? Because, you know, you give...
The...
I know they're not union, but you have to give them something.
The board approved...
You're not going to have harmony here with them getting nothing.
Right, the board approved a 1% pool of...
1%?
Yes, sir.
It's a 1% pool, Pete. Doesn't mean they're getting 1%.
They could get...
Correct. I think they should get more than 1%, but that's my personal opinion.
I move to approve the...
Second.
Item on the agenda.
We have motion, second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trusty Bun.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
Trusty Heinz.
Yay.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yay.
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Bun.
And that also carries unanimously. Sorry. Thank you. Move on to items for discussion. We have a presentation.
A brief presentation, I believe.
I heard that. Is it not a PowerPoint?
It is not.
It's a discussion.
Essentially, I was just going to point out some of the revisions to the snow and ice plan. Typically, you see a snow and ice plan every end of October, early November for your vote. Being that I've made some adjustments to it, I thought we'd introduce it in this meeting, and I'll kind of glaze over some of those adjustments. I won't bore you with the 18 pages of detail. Some of the biggest adjustments will be during a typical snowstorm, whereas the department used to send out six trucks manned by six men over six various routes throughout town. That adjustment will now be seven routes covered by 13 trucks and 13 guys, which should bring the operational period down by about 50% and certainly give us better customer service and safety on the roads. The seventh route, or the addition of the seventh route, I should say, is taking some of the thoroughfares through town, the mains, if you will, and making that a dedicated route. So, there will be two large trucks working in tandem across the mains throughout town, which, again, will just improve road safety, traveling conditions, puts an emphasis on those roads. Those trucks will go back and forth across town as part of that route, and the drivers have been instructed that if they have a main route that falls within their zone, that needs some attention as they cross over it, they're to give it that attention as well, because those mains could be clogged up with traffic or just, you know, the travels. But I think all in all, the largest adjustment you're going to see is the additional trucks and workers out plowing those routes is going to bring down the operational period. Granted, it increases the number of guys out working, so, you know, if you're just looking at that, it would lead you to believe that there would be additional overtime costs or wear and tear on fuel, those such expenses. But if we're bringing the operational period down, they should be relatively the same, excuse me. That's really the biggest adjustment to the plan. There's some things in the plan as well for future adjustments. Those are not budgeted at this time, but those are things that I'd be interested to seek your approval to implement as we approach next year, to reduce our salt usage and improve on some of the environmental impacts related to snow and ice. Again, it's simply just kind of getting the discussion going. It's in your packet tonight. If you haven't had a chance to look at it in detail, you're not asked to vote on it tonight. That will take place at the next meeting. I can answer any questions now, or certainly again in two weeks.
I have a question, if I may.
Yes.
If we're going from six guys to 13 guys out there, I understand if it's a short-duration snowfall. What if it's a multi-day snowfall? How does that affect that?
So, you'll see four different crew sizes referenced on page 10 of the program. There's a spot crew, which essentially is one or two employees that's out just to deal with some reported icy conditions, maybe a bridge deck, Montgomery Road, River Bend, some of the ones that come to mind, that or drifting. Problem area crew is a little bit larger scale. It's three or four employees, essentially, that would go out and deal with drifting or icing. If we had icing village-wide and we were just doing a salt run, if you will, that would probably be about four or five trucks, and we'd break the town up and we'd go at it that way. The full crew is the typical storm. So, in a typical storm, that's where I'm referring to 13 trucks, 13 guys. If it's a long-duration event, we will have to plan accordingly. Anything that's projected to last longer than a forecasted 12-hour snowfall, we'll have to kind of go into that long-duration mode, because even after the last snowflake flies, there's still a cleanup period. So, in those events, we would go into more of a skeletonized crew. It won't change the seven routes. It'll just reduce the trucks working in tandem during a typical event to a single truck. It'll be more of a maintenance thing, and then, once the storm stops, if we have enough bodies fully rested, we can tackle it in tandem, or we have to go at it single truck in each route. It delays the cleanup time, but, you know, it's...
But in a heavy snowfall, this allows us to essentially get more snow off the street faster, and then we can kind of adjust and see what needs to happen as we go from there?
What the adjustment essentially does, what you'll see that's different than years past, is in a typical clipper storm, something that comes in, you have two or three inches in a couple-hour period or overnight, those will be cleaned up a lot quicker. So, you'll probably see more trucks on the road, but at the same time, you'll see a much quicker cleanup period or operational period. You'll be back to black streets much faster. During a long-duration snowstorm, you probably won't observe much difference than what you're used to in years past. So, we will keep up with it as best we can, but it'll be on a skeletonized crew, so...
When we say skeletonized crew, if... And I bring up the snow, the 19-inch snowfall that we had this past winter, if a full crew is now going to be 13 people, last winter, I think, a full crew for us was like six trucks or something out at one time. Is a skeletonized crew that six-man crew, is it smaller, is it larger?
No, ideally, it would be a seven-man crew. Obviously, the numbers don't work. If you have 13 bodies, you can't split it evenly and have seven and seven. So, it would likely be the six... Six-man crew and maybe a seven-man crew during the day, or whenever, you know, it works best for the given storm. The one factor that is spoken about in the plan is that in running, you know, three water plants and a water system, some of the individuals that complement the snow and ice are also utilized elsewhere. We can somewhat turn our attention away from building maintenance and mechanic duties and utilize those people and, you know, limp by for a day or two and then catch up later. But when it comes to the water plant operations, it is necessary to pull a body or two to run those 24-hour facilities, essentially. So, it... All I can say is, the only thing I can guarantee is that we will do our best to keep up with it. In certain circumstances, there may only be five trucks on the road.
Okay. Is our mechanic one of the 13 people?
Correct. The building technician, the fleet mechanic, the three water operators. There are 11 unionized employees and two supervisors. That makes up the 13.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think that was the problem last year. We are too short guys, I think, than we had this time, and you had a guy that always had to go to do the water.
Certainly.
Are you going to drive a truck?
I am licensed to drive a truck. I am certainly not foreign to plowing snow and not averse to it. And the guys, in speaking with the guys, they're very welcoming of the help, which can be a difficult scenario sometimes in a union environment. They don't seem to object to it. However, you know, there are other duties that I attend to as well. So, I think it all just depends on the timing of a storm, but certainly, I... Yes. You will see me in a truck.
Thank you.
Can you remind me the max number of hours that they can drive?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe DOT says 16 hours. However, there are some exemptions to us, afforded to us, because it is considered emergency response and first responders, essentially. But for reasons of safety, we would try to limit it to 12, 16 hours max. Does that mean that if we got snowed in and we had to run guys for 20 hours, we wouldn't keep them on? It all depends, but we would certainly afford them breaks throughout that period so that they would be as fresh and safe as possible.
The other thing I wanted to mention, I thought trustee Youngerman was going this route. One of the problems we had during the blizzard last year, which... There were several things that were against us, and we don't need to relive that, but we did hear from a lot of the residents that the level of service was not what would be typical. And again, you have to consider it was a blizzard. But we had mechanical breakdowns, so we had Alan off the street, and I don't know if the other driver then took his truck. So, my concern is if we have some kind of equipment failure, you know, we're going to pull our mechanic off, obviously, to address any type of equipment issue at that time. So, then, we switch somebody out to go out, but if they're only... Well, I don't want to say only, but based on the shifts, let's say the shifts now extend to 16 hours, we can't have Alan there 24 hours. So, that's why I have a little bit of a concern.
That is correct.
You know, how that would get handled. And again, that's all on you, but I'm just saying, I have a little bit of concern there.
I understand your concern. I share the concern. We can only play the cards we have right now. We don't have a fleet that allows us to have trucks in reserve, so essentially, during a typical storm, every truck that's equipped will be utilized, and if one of those goes down, obviously, there's one less being driven, so there's a good opportunity to pull the mechanic and have him working on equipment. One of the efficiencies we should achieve is by assigning these guys to the same route during a typical storm. Doesn't mean they won't cover for others at some point throughout the season, but for the most part, they're going to be assigned to one route and one partner, so they will achieve some efficiencies there. And in doing that, we assign Alan to the route closest to the shop so that he can respond and potentially work on things a lot quicker than in years past when he was on the far side of town. I share in those concerns, but there's just not... There's not a real good solution. Unbudgeted right now, but one idea might be to hire a part-time mechanic that's kind of just on the clock when we need them. That would probably pay for itself in the reduction of Alan's overtime, not to mention the wear on him and his family. Allows us to...
I mean, that's a lot, right?
Keep him on the road when we need to keep him on the road, and potentially bring somebody in to work on equipment as soon as the storm is over. There are some potential solutions there, but at this time, they're unbudgeted. Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have... I thought last year, can... Is there some sort of program where people can figure out where the snowplows are with the plow trucks? Or is that City of Chicago?
Yeah, that's Chicago.
That's not... Okay. I'm sorry.
That would not be us.
That's another unbudgeted item.
Todd, don't ask for that in the budget next year, please.
No, to be honest, I... Doesn't mean they won't cover for others at some point throughout the season, but for the most part, they're gonna be assigned to one route and one partner. So they will achieve some efficiencies there. And in doing that, we assigned Alan to the route closest to the shop so that he can respond and potentially work on things a lot quicker than in years past when he was on the far side of town. I share in those concerns, but there's just not, there's not a real good solution. Unbudgeted right now, but one idea might be to hire a part-time mechanic that's kind of just on the clock when we need them. That would probably pay for itself in the reduction of Alan's overtime, not to mention the wear on him and his family. Allows us to.
That's a lot, right.
Keep him on the road when we need to keep him on the road and potentially bring somebody in to work on equipment as soon as the storm is over. There are some potential solutions there, but at this time, they're unbudgeted. Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have, and I thought last year, can, is there some sort of program where people can figure out where the snowplows are with the plow trucks? Or is that City of Chicago?
Yeah, that's Chicago.
That's not, okay, I'm sorry.
That would not be us.
That's another unbudgeted item.
Todd, don't ask for that in the budget next year, please.
No, to be honest, I wouldn't want it. Thank you.
But thank you for the items that you did put in there. That was very interesting and I appreciate that.
And if you have more questions that come up, feel free to call me or we can discuss them in two weeks, at which time you'll be asked to approve it.
We could buy each of the guys iPhones and where's my iPhone app? We'd know where all the trucks are.
There are some time card programs that work off of smartphones that allow that feature. I'm not saying that I'm for it, but you're not far off in the technology.
I would add, several of the complaints I got were actually about roads that aren't maintained by the village and the more we can do to improve the understanding. I had several complaints about Route 30 and I don't disagree, but I said that's not for our equipment and our crews to do.
You're absolutely right, and there have been some staff discussions regarding the new interchange. I have some great concerns about the way that interchange is gonna function during a snowstorm or I should say more of the beginning of a snowstorm or during an icing event. Typically, if there's snow on the pavement, motorists tend to slow down a little bit, not all, but some. It's when you believe that you have safety in your favor and you don't, that things, bad things can happen. And Chief Myers and I have discussed it, but again, it's not our road. I'm afraid that there's gonna be a lot of spinouts off those clover leaves, if you will. And there's some steep embankments, so there could be some spectacular crashes if that's not, the warning isn't heeded by motorists.
Any other comments for Todd on this tonight? I would say I know that we had, we had a blizzard last year, but going back, as long as I've been involved in Montgomery, we have a very solid staff and a solid plowing procedure and program. So I know these tweaks are only gonna benefit that this next year. So I appreciate your looking into ways to improve that because continuous improvement is one of our main goals, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, if there's no other comments on that, we'll move on to new or unfinished business. Somebody has certainly had something.
I have two items. This Wednesday, I will be at Aurora West High School, participating in their career fair as a panel speaker for government officials, public employees, things like that. That's my second time doing that. So that's coming up. I think they're gonna do it in the fall and the spring now, so I did it last spring. Next item is, Thursday is the Ocot Road Cleanup that MAC and Community Development is coordinating. Just wanted to remind everybody of that. That's all I have, those two items.
I have an item. I'd like to congratulate the Village President on becoming the Metro West President. So congratulations, and we look forward to good things.
My only comment was that the Packers did have off this week, but back to the green and gold, I think all of us missed, if we did not go to the police station, that our Village President with his green and gold kilt looked very nice.
I would like to see that photo.
Yes.
On the.
That would be a very good photo for.
That would be a good one in the.
Reminded me of that commercial with the antique thing, that where the guy thought he was German. It turned out that was Matt.
You should have seen one of the kids that was there, was a tiny little three-year-old. And he was dressed, he said he's like a little German boy. It was awesome. So it was a pretty spectacular event, Doug, the, I drove past there at 10 o'clock. Then I came back from church at noon and, I mean, jam-packed, so.
It was, Armando's gonna speak a little bit.
Yeah, I think I'd definitely like to mention about the second annual Halloween safety event we had. It was highly successful. The weather cooperated, which was huge.
I take credit for that.
You do, okay.
Thank you.
Of course, you could thank multiple people, our employees, sponsors, board members, Public Works, Montgomery Fire, volunteers, Rotary. But the easiest probably way for me to do that is just to read a letter, an email that Sergeant Palco received. And again, she spearheaded this whole thing, so kudos to her. But I'll read this to you real quick and I think this will sum up what the event meant. "Good morning. I wanted to send an email to express my gratitude for the Halloween event I attended yesterday. I am a resident of Montgomery and I took my two-year-old son to your event for the first time and was thoroughly impressed. I've had the opportunity over several years to host many community events as I have worked for the Oswego Land Park District and now currently Geneva, and your event was truly one to remember. After leaving, my son spent the day declaring to anyone who would listen, 'Police are nice', a lesson I am glad he has learned. Whoever you had playing Clifford was beyond kind to my son. I have no idea why, but he was immediately drawn to him and was most likely pestering him. But Clifford not only entertained my son by giving high fives and dancing, but he also helped him play a game of bozo buckets. Thank you for such a great event, not only teaching lessons about safety, but also for all the police officers who inspire our children. I would be more than happy to help with future events, should the need exist, either through donations or volunteering. Thank you again for all you do. Nicole Vickers." So I think that pretty much sums up, you know, what the event meant and what we tried to do. And it was a positive interaction with the community. So just want to pass along, you know, how much we appreciate everybody's help in making it successful.
I think the rough number is that there was about five times as many people there this year as there were last year. It was unbelievable turnout and not one negative comment the entire day. I didn't hear anybody. We ran out of hot dogs at 12:20, but not one person complained. Everybody had a great time. And again, my hat's off to Sergeant Palco, Ada, all the staff at the PD and Public Works that did all of the work putting it together and just so that we can bust them out publicly. I'm pretty sure Clifford was Clifford.
Yes.
He was Cliff from Public Works and he was. And he did a really, really great job with the kids and, you know, everybody did. You know, it was a great, great event.
Thank you.
Very cool. Anything else? All right. Hearing none. You see the future meetings there, Plan Commission November 5th and our next Village Board meeting two weeks from tonight on November 9th at 7:00 PM. With that, we have no executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak. Trustee Ben.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.